All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, school committee meeting here at Tinsborough High School. I officially call this meeting to order, remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded, and we'll start with introductions.
Robin Mullin.
Good evening, Julie Guastucci.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branco, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Teneral.
Ryan McMahon.
Paul Mitchell.
Amy Fazersky.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Thank you, if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll seek a motion to approve the March 19th school committee and executive session minutes, executive session minutes not to be released at this time.
Make that motion.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? I, opposed, that carries 7-0-0. Correspondents?
None at this time.
Visitors, comments, and questions, other than the group here to present this evening? Seen none.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 9A out of order.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries 7-0-0.
So, Mr. Chair, as you know, a part of our, our, our plan this year has been to get students in front of the school committee to present different events, happenings, uh, things that are going on in our schools, um, the high schools already come, and the middle schools has already come, so tonight, we are blessed to have the elementary school here tonight, so I'm gonna let Mrs. Kavanaugh provide a brief overview, and then turn it over to our guest presenters.
So, good evening, thank you for allowing us to come here this evening, um, I'm not gonna share too much because I don't wanna steal their thunder, this is really all about, um, these student leaders, and what they've been able to take away from their time at TES. Um, so six years ago, um, we had the opportunity to adopt and roll out our core values at TES, and at that time, I never anticipated that they would become such an important part of our climate and culture, um, but they truly have become an essential part of what we do every single day at TES, so you're gonna hear about that and how important it is, um, to our students.
Hello, my name is Cameron Times, I'm in Mr. Lawrence's 5th grade class, I'm student council president, and I also play the saxophone in our school band. Thank you for inviting us to join you tonight to talk about our Stripes Core Values. I was in kindergarten when the Stripes Core Values were first implemented.
I am Andrew Fahy, and I'm in Mr. Lewis's 5th grade class, I'm a student council member, a writer for the TS Telegram, and also play the trombone in our school band.
I am Tess Fahy, and I'm in Mrs. Cooper's 5th grade class, I'm a student council member, as well as a member of the team for Tigers and Athletes, and I also play flute for our school band.
I'm Colby Times, I'm in Mrs. Monroe's 4th grade class, I'm student council vice president, I also play the trumpet for our school band.
I'm Kelly McLeary, I'm in Mrs. Rose's 4th grade class, I'm student council member from Florida with the TS Telegram, member of Actra and Factory, and I also play the trumpet for our school band.
We would like to start by telling you why core values are important. Core values are things that come from your heart and that are important to you. I think core values are important for students because we learn the role of kids, and when we grow up, we're still kind.
Core values make learning the rules more fun and easier to follow.
At TES, our core values are an acronym, we call them our stripes. Each letter stands for one of our core values, and we would now like to tell you what they are.
The first S stands for sincerity, sincerity means to be honest and always tell the truth, it also means doing the right thing, even if no one else is watching.
The T stands for teamwork, teamwork is when we work together and cooperate. The R stands for respect, respect is listening to your teacher, not talking to others or talking, and treating others how you would like to be treated. The I stands for inclusion, inclusion is when you invite someone to work or play with you, it also means paying attention to others who may be feeling left out, and including them in conversations or activities.
The P stands for perseverance, perseverance is when you keep working hard on something in class and don't quit.
The E stands for empathy, empathy is when you think about what it would be like to stand in someone else's shoes.
The S stands for service, service is when you do things for others. Every classroom in grades 3 through 5 conducts a service project each year, and then we present it at one of our community building assemblies. This year, my class created birthday bags, each bag included supplies needed for a birthday party, like tablecloths and plates. We donated these bags to an organization that gives the bags to kids in need.
There are many different ways students can wear their stripes core values. We learned about stripes core values at our community building assemblies and on the morning news. Kids also see posters and signs around TES reminding them of stripes and to show them every day.
All stripes are important, but we each have a favorite core value. Empathy is my favorite because you should always be aware of how other people are feeling, and try and help in any situation.
Teamwork is my favorite because I love sports, and you should always use teamwork in sports.
Inclusion is my favorite because it is more fun to be with many people and not just one person.
Perseverance is my favorite because I love when I see people never giving up.
Perseverance is my favorite because it is all of the stripes. For example, it is empathy because you treat other people personally as serving and helping. We all work hard to show our stripes every day. I show my stripes by helping my classmates in math and always trying to be kind.
I show all of my stripes by being kind.
I show my stripes by helping people and being respectful to my teachers. I show stripes in a lot of little ways, like helping friends through a math problem.
I show my stripes by always trying to say hi to kids in the hallways, even if I don't know them.
Our stripes core values make TES a special place because everyone tries hard to be kind and show their stripes.
It helps people follow the rules in a fun way, kids like the acronym STRIPES, and they also like their own stripe stickers from teachers when they observe someone.
Thank you for listening to us talk about our stripes tonight. Before we end, is there anything else you guys would like to share about stripes at TES?
Stripes are core values that we not only should show at school, but also at home and in the community.
I think we need core values, without them, kids will grow up and not be kind. The reason our core values acronym is stripes is because our mascots are Tigers.
The mascot's names I loyalty for the Law Elementary School and Sergeant Strip for the upper elementary school.
We would now like to present you with stripe stickers to thank you for showing your stripes with the service you show to the Tinsborough community. As we say every day at the end of our news.
Thank you and have a great night, don't forget to show your stripes, woo!
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Well, I will start by saying, it's hard for adults to sit up there and do what you guys just did, so congratulations.
That was amazing.
You did an amazing job, you really did.
Thank you.
So, I'll open it up to the rest of the committee.
Um, no, I mean, I just agree, I, listening to you guys talk, you all talked really clearly, and it's just impressive, very impressive.
That was very nice, it's a great, uh, program that you have at the elementary school, and, uh, we're proud that we can give you the opportunities to, to be able to, uh, be able to do these things, and you're a great bunch of kids, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody got any stripe stickers yet this week? You did, pull up.
Played floor hockey, uh, our team has perseverance, we're never getting out.
Awesome.
I got one with music.
Nice.
Um, I got one with him in floor hockey for perseverance.
So, I, so, so, clearly, the, uh, the future is bright here at Tinsborough, great job, it was very impressive. Um, did anybody help you write that, is there anyone you'd like to thank or recognize that may be here tonight, maybe?
Uh, yeah, I wanna, yeah, I wanna thank Mrs. Young for putting it together, helping.
Mrs. Young, Miss McGas, Miss Rek, Miss Rek, they're a big help, aren't they?
Yep.
So, who, who runs student council, who's the advisor for student council?
Mrs. Rowan, Mrs. Vincent, and then we have our presidents.
And how often do you meet?
Once a month, every Thursday morning.
Yeah, once a month, or sometimes twice.
Is there anything else you'd like to talk about, so I heard about the birthday bags, that's unbelievable, that's great, what else is student council looking to do?
Last year, for, um, Mrs. Bires and Muzadi's class, we read to, um, kindergarteners.
Great. I've been, Mr. Lewis loved that, he loves reading.
Yeah, um.
We're doing Earth Day cleanup.
I can hear you, I'm sorry?
Earth Day cleanup.
Oh, great, that's excellent, great service right there. I don't need to dominate, anyone else says anything that...
I just wanted to say I was blown away, that was awesome.
Thank you.
And I have to say, I remember being on a school council meeting, we always talked about stripes, and to see it come to this point is amazing.
Like I said, I never would have imagined it would have been such a, a huge part of our school community, um, and really, I, I attest a lot of that to our school counselors for their support, um, in rolling it out. So, and I, I think you guys didn't give yourselves enough credit because all of what they said tonight was purely from them, um, we know you typed it up for them, but this was all them.
Sure it was.
And genuine, and, and from the heart, and you guys did a fantastic job.
Excellent, thank you guys for coming out, thank you to the parents for, uh, for bringing them here this evening, we appreciate it, great job, guys.
TES Ross, great job. Why don't we give you a minute to get out of the room, unless you wanna hang for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you want me to leave some pizza?
Yeah.
Honestly, did you care about our pizza?
We voted for it, delivered 14.
14 game.
Oh, really?
I'll leave a couple out.
We do have executive session.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
All right, on to our regular scheduled programming, personnel, or Policy Assembly Committee, I'm sorry.
Um, tonight we met, um, and we're gonna be doing some reaffirms and some first reads, um, later on, and adjutant.
Personnel?
Yes, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, we did receive a letter of resignation from Ryan Guthrie, um, he unfortunately, uh, was afforded, uh, a job offer that he couldn't turn down, Ryan was with us a short time, but his impact, uh, was, was great. He, uh, did not, a very great job, uh, replacing or succeeding George Triakis. The job is posted, um, we are receiving multiple applications at this point, uh, and, uh, we've had a conversation with Mr. Triakis, who will come on, who'll come back on part-time, a couple days a week to kind of fill a void till we can hire a new supervisor building grounds, but, uh, Ryan Guthrie, uh, is gone out of effect of Friday, this Friday will be last day.
All right, well, good luck to Mr. Guthrie, and, uh, thank you, George, for being willing to, uh, come back and help us, we appreciate that. Unfinished business.
So, Mr. Chair, we need to talk about the budget before our Monday night tri-board meeting, um, so in your folder we have, or in the drive, we have the, uh, budget reconciliation page, which hasn't changed much from last week, if Mark can bring that up. Um, again, as you recall, we left off at, uh, an $813,000 request, uh, which is far greater than the two and a half percent that town was looking for, so this was a proposal last week that we, we kinda threw out there to look at a way to kinda close the gap a little bit and, and come back with a number that's closer to two and a half percent. Um, so I have this number here, I don't know if it's, it makes sense, the other thing that we've done, um, is we put together a potential presentation for Monday night that shows what these numbers look like and the impact from the budget, as well as the staffing impact, as well as answer some of the questions that I know, uh, were, were, uh, asked last week, so if you want, I can do a, a, a quick drive-through on the presentation and answer questions from there, and kinda make some decisions to move forward. So, this is in drive? Yep. So, as you recall, um, no different than any other year, the budget process began with the administrative team coming together, looking at, uh, potential needs and growth, uh, moving forward, uh, that led us to an early January number that reflected over $1.2 million increase to our current budget. Uh, so the committee tasked us with coming back with two initiatives, present a level service budget to the best of our ability, that includes kindergarten, free full-day kindergarten, that was one of the non-negotiables from this committee, uh, and certainly, the administrative team recognizes that, and, and promoted that as well. So, that came back, uh, in January 22nd, we landed at $813,000, uh, we haven't really done much since then, so what we did last week was roll out a potential proposal to get our budget number down to 539,650, which actually is a 2.67% increase, uh, and I call that about two and a half percent. So, that's where we are, and that's how we got to tonight, next slide please. So, there's the overview, that was our FY19 school budget, 2185800, our total school expenditures, our anticipated revenues, again, a reminder, we're gonna take a $100,000 one-time valley credit, we rolled the ice on that, we're hoping it's gonna be about $100,000, we don't know, there's, there's no guarantee there. The next thing, we hope to get a board of selectmen to support us accessing the spent stabilization count, which Mr. Messina has about 119?
119, yes.
Has $119,000 in it right now, so we'd almost wipe that account out, that would get us to our SC request of 2725450 or 539,000 above, so let's go a little bit deeper on that. Again, the things we talked about in this budget, we know that there's a significant special education tuition increase, our salary increase is actually nominal, 6.61%, uh, in part because we're reducing staff. This budget also does include the free full-day kindergarten, we were fortunate to have an increase in circuit breaker, but we also lose revenue with kindergarten and preschool. So, we'll continue. So, these are the numbers that, that, this is where, this is where the, the biggest hit to the budget becomes, is our, our district tuition costs, you can see the numbers, I don't need to read slides to you, but, you know, when you see the third set of bullets down, a six, uh, was that 46.1% increase in tuitions, uh, it's costly. Um, again, no different than any other program or student at Tinsborough, these are our kids, we're gonna do everything we can to educate them, um, this one comes with a significant price tag. So, that's, that was really one of the, one of the, uh, certainly, uh, impactful line items within the budget, uh, and you can see enrollment trends over the years.
So... Could we go back to that slide for one, one second? I think it's important that our added district tuition went up $671,124, keep that number in mind when we look at what we're asking for. Next one, go ahead, sir.
So, I'm just gonna give you a minute to chew on this, I don't need to read all these numbers to you, but...
Make a suggestion on the slide to put that number, subtract those two numbers. So, put 20 over 19, and then just bottom.
Got it.
Put the difference.
Yep.
It's on the slide.
Yes, thank you, Paul.
So, I'm gonna give you a minute to process the slide. A list of all our expenses, our expenses went up by 2.72%, and our revenues increased by 3.14%. So, what I did, the numbers in red, those are the numbers that were adjusted based on the reconciliation that's in your drive right now. So, if you look at salary and wages, that's those two positions that we identified in the reconciliation. The line item expense, that's $61,000 there, Mr. Messina, help me out, that's, that's the attorney's fees.
Attorney fees and the, um, specialized, uh, transportation.
Yep.
As well as, um, the furniture line at the middle school.
Correct. The $25,000 right out of teaching and learning cycle, and then the revenues re-increased by 20,000. And of course, the big $115,000 at the bottom in red. Happy to answer any questions about this slide, it's chock-full of information.
So, basically, the, the request, the budget is a decrease in the overall school based on the, the, uh, specialized tuitions.
Yes.
$600,000.
We're asking less than one, one line item increase.
Yes, so, we're cutting the budget.
We are.
So, how did you cut it from last time we talked, I don't under, I can't see where you cut it.
So, sorry, I didn't explain it clear, so the red numbers there?
Yeah.
If you look at the far-right column, that's the amount that was taken out. And that amount, so if you go out here, Julie, that 52,000? That represents the two staffing positions on this reconciliation page.
Oh, okay. So, that's what we're from last time, that's what you cut from last time?
And those two staffing positions, just to clarify, are... Positions that are no longer, w- will no longer be needed as a result of the added district placements, correct?
Well, so those, those were already accounted for in the initial budget, these two are, this is the, um, administrative assistant position? Shared between the elementary and middle school, and this is a paraprofessional at the elementary school.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I, I just think that, that, after conversations with some of the people in the elementary school, um, the reasoning for, uh, that was given for the, being able to eliminate that position there, uh, was because the kindergarten was going for free, so there would be a lot of that paperwork, it's no longer required. I was told that, that because that system was pretty much automated, um, that's really not gonna save a whole lot of time. And, the amount of work that's going to be put back onto somebody else for all of the special education paperwork and scheduling for AEPs and getting all of that paperwork will be difficult to handle for another person. They believe that that position is necessary at the elementary school, at the middle school, now we're cutting back down to just having one person there all day long. That person has a sick day, we have no one there to cut one. That's, that's very difficult to run an office that way. Um, and for the total amount of 24,000 and the change, I don't think we're getting a bang for the buck in that cut. I believe that that position should be retained and kept in the budget that we proposed for them, for the amount of, the amount of percentage points that that actually saves us over that 2.5 percent, I don't think it's a wrap.
Sure, so I, I don't necessarily know who you spoke with, uh, but based on the administrators in the room who are in charge of the operation of the school.
I understand that.
This is their recommendation that I'm, I'm supporting, um, but, you know, uh, there, there's no good cut, there are no easy cuts, um, you know, I think we can make an argument for any position we've put up there. Um, and again, you know, as we, as Joe and I have said all along, it's, it's April, uh, we need to see how things shake out, you know, uh, one staffing change, you know, could potentially free up some cash at some point down the way where, where a position potentially could be saved, whether it's that one or the paraprofessional, I don't know, but right now, man, our budget is a moving target at all times.
And so...
But, but duly noted.
I would at least encourage you to keep, to keep that position at the middle school, to keep coverage there at halftime, and then if money should free up somewhere else, even during the course of the year, can always add that.
So, look at that.
And, and I do think, just to be respectful to the administrators at the middle school too, um, not everybody who's, uh, around these particular cuts is privy to the solution yet, because the cut isn't official at this point. So, right, so I, I do, I do trust that, that they have a viable solution to some of the problems that you proposed about coverage in the office, et cetera, otherwise it wouldn't be a proposal, so I, I just think it's tough, 'cause we often don't disclose the solution until we've made the move.
Well, I, I understand that, it's just that we added her, we added that position, the half position there, because it was necessary, because it was no one helping here in our office.
Yep, yeah.
Different time, different stuff.
Different, different staffing pattern, and we could add the council in that office as well now, since then, but, but duly noted, I hear what you're saying, I'm not disagreeing with you. Um, does that make sense, how we did this?
Yep, I just, I just didn't see the change from last time clearly until you pointed that out.
What other comments, questions, can we help answer?
So, we are committed to the full-day kindergarten in this budget.
We are.
And that loss of revenue was a significant, uh, significant portion of the change.
Is that that 200,000 or about 250,000 from the tuition sign, is that?
That's actually a combination of, um, our reduction in, uh, preschool offerings that happened this year as well, so, um, the kindergarten portion of that, I believe it's about 176, um, of that 200. 176, 250, Julie, is the number for kindergarten.
And just, you know, again, to give that some context, $176,000 to address the three-to-one likelihood of needing reintervention, the two-to-one likelihood of needing math intervention, to potentially reduce staffing for one-to-one services, intervention services down the road, uh, I think, I think that'll, that'll pay itself a tenfold in, in the future.
Yeah, I didn't wanna speak for you on that, but I, respectfully, yeah, we spent a lot of time, months ago, really presenting the data and the educational justification of all that, and how we need to get our kids, um, all of our kids up to speed appropriately, and so I think when we talk about the numbers, I just hope that that message doesn't get lost and buried by the numbers.
So, the decrease in tuition is expected to pay off with the decrease in services from the future?
Services and staffing in the future.
What else was, Mr. Messina has noted in the past, it's, we're gonna start getting reimbursement additional 170 money for those.
Right, right.
So, it won't cost that much to follow here.
Right.
And we need no additional staffing.
It's time.
It, it is.
Only one of 12 communities I've lived in the state right now that doesn't offer it.
I've gotten, I've gotten so much feedback from parents, thank you, trust me that can be considering this.
They need to show up at the tri-board meeting. Because that's gonna be one of the questions, you know, you're losing revenue to, to get this budget, and, you know, they want these things to happen, they gotta, they don't have to voice their support, but being there to show the support is something that's important.
Well, I think, you know, at the end of the day, for the school committee budget, if we prioritize this, you know, to get to that number, um, if, if, if we can't hit 539, 650, and they say come back with a, a different way to get to 450, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend kindergarten yet, I would still keep that in the budget, because I, I think it's that important, and I, and I think we'd have to get there a different way, you know, um, it's, it's really the, the purview of the, the board of selectmen, of the town administration to set a number for us, but with that number, it looks like educationally is, is the responsibility of the committee, so... But you're right, though, I think the more they see that this is a, supported by the community.
I mean, you know, if the increase in the, the decrease in revenue still doesn't match the increase in costs that we've had in the, in the special ed budget, and it, there's nothing that anybody, anybody here or at the board of selectmen can do about it. It's money that's gotta be paid first, and, you know, I, you know, I'm an old taxpayer, and I would like to see this budget as trimmed as possible, but I want to, the school system to be the best that it can be, because that's what the value is, my property in this community. You know, people don't come by to, uh, see what the recreation department does, people come to ask, what's your school like, who's gonna, you know, those are the people that are gonna come in and purchase your house in the future.
I 100% agree, I, I, I feel that this is a, a fiscally responsible budget, it certainly, it's lean for the schools, um, but it, it doesn't take away our programming, it doesn't take away, it, it minimizes the impact on the classroom, and, and at the end of the day, that's what we need. We are going to, we're gonna push forward next year, we know next year, we need a math coach at the elementary school, that has to be in the budget, we know that we need another computer science teacher next year, that has to be in the budget, those are non-negotiables based on what the state is telling us, so, um, at this time, we're... So, um, at this time, we're okay. Next year, for this situation, we're gonna increase it by two positions because we have to. So speaking of staffing, if you wanna go to the next slide. I'll give you a minute to process this.
Just for clarity purposes, how many years in a row now have we actually cut and not, um, had an increase in budget?
Staffing, cut staffing?
Yeah.
So this will be the second year, uh, no, the second year in a row, at least.
That was two or three.
Joe?
Probably, probably at least three.
So that means, you know, we've been cutting, 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 but that also means budget's less. So, you know, I think, I think this is the number we, as low as I wanna go. The tri board meeting is very important.
So this shows that we started FY eighteen, our actual head count was two hundred sixty-three point six, FTEs are full-time equivalents. As we developed the budget last year, remember we put it on nurse, a library media specialist, half special ed and point two OT. We restructured the middle school, we eliminated daycare, so at the end of the day, we reduced by nine point six positions last year. So our FY nineteen was budgeted two hundred fifty full positions. When the FY nineteen year started, several positions went unfilled for various reasons. Whether it was, uh, recognizing that we had tuitions that we didn't account for, whether it was somebody leaving through attrition. And we said, you know what, we can actually collapse this, but those were the positions that never got filled last year, five point four of them. Which brought our actual head count to two forty-eight point six. This budget, it just has a point eight increase for the kindergarten teacher OT, and it reduces the following positions, five point eight. For a total reduction of six and putting our FY projected, FY twenty projected at two forty-three point six. So twenty positions over two years, six of which are budget neutral because they were self, self-supported through tuitions at the daycare. Four positions as a result of restructure.
That's super stud.
Supervisor students.
Especially now that you've read it aloud.
It's a point, it's a point oh five.
Yeah, the, the previous position that we restructured was a point seven five here at the high school. Um, that person retired when we brought in a, a new person and restructured the position. Based upon that position and that person, we reduced that to a point seven. So seven tenths of a, of a person rather than point seven five.
This is point zero five, this is five.
A point seven five.
You're doing that right. Both of you are.
I, I'd like to just.
I think it's very obvious in looking at this head count that this administration, Dr. Flanagan and his group. Has looked at every position within the district. We could've kept some of these positions and just put them in our back pocket, and they didn't. They made the cuts where the cuts needed to be made, where it wouldn't affect educating our children and running. A top school district, so thank you to Dr. Flanagan and his staff for that. But we've cut twenty full-time equivalents, again, six of those were the elementary, were the elementary school daycare. Uh, which was self-funded, but fifteen full-time equivalents. The two Valley Gravitative Custodians was in. A contract that Dr. Flanagan signed, which moved that expense to them, which was nice. So, again, I just think we look at our salary rollover, one hundred and five thousand contractually. Six hundred and seventy-one thousand and just our, just our added district costs. We're putting in a full-time daycare, which is gonna reduce our revenue by a hundred and seventy-one thousand, we'll get some of that back. Kindergarten, sorry, full-time kindergarten. Some of that back in, in capital revenue, and we're still asking for less than our contractual obligations. To our union salaries and our added district costs by a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That to me just says that this administration's done everything we've asked them to do. And our children are not suffer, our, our students are not, uh, suffering as a result of it, our staff is not being penalized. So I applaud Dr. Flanagan and his group, uh, for this presentation, but I'll, I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
I also wanna recognize the administration, and I think part of this reduction recognizes the change in the, uh, the makeup of the community. And we were able to, uh, shift things and change staffing at certain areas based on the changes in enrollment. You know, the enrollment in Tingsborough's gone down from, I think it was two hundred and, uh, two thousand. Two hundred and fifty students at one point in the early two thousands, now it's down at sixteen hundred. Sixteen fifty. And that, those changes in staffing and needs have been adjusted along with the changes in requirements from the state. To provide services and different things, so that. Where the administration is doing the best they can to, uh. Meet the, the financial needs of the community, but they have requirements that have to be met, and these are them. Second, the. The. I applaud the administration for looking at everything and making sure that they're spending the Tingsborough taxpayers' dollars in a wise manner.
That's all, just to, to come, thank you for that, um, you know, it's really. We have a, a, we have an administrative team, we do, and it's not the old days where I fought for my school. And didn't care what happened above me or below me. Uh, we sat in a room as a group, eight of us, nine of us, and said, what is best for this district? And we all got on the same page. So to the administrators at the building level, or the teachers in the classroom who are boots in the ground, that do yeoman's work. We appreciate all that they do, and they recognize this, and they're working hard to say, where can we streamline service, where can we, where can we pick up things? Where can we co-teach, where can we, where can we jump in? Because they recognize what our budget situation is, um, you know, um. This was anomaly this year with, with the district tuitions, but, uh, you know, I'll go on record right now, next year, we are including those two positions minimally. They have to be in the budget. It's, they're non-negotiable, uh, we can already forecast that. And if you go to the last page of this presentation, Mark, you know, there are things that we wanna do, there are things that we'd like to do. Um, and we should have these positions, and that's what we're gonna strive for. Um, some of these positions, we already, we have, uh, one position or one person in that role, we'd like to get two or three. But we've been creative in how we've deployed our staff, um, and certainly decrease in enrollment has bothered it too, that's helped us, that's helped us redefine some of our roles. So, uh, we are giving our kids a great product, and we're pushing them, and, um, our teachers are challenging them each and every day. Um, I, I feel this is a responsible budget, um, I don't feel that I would go down or advocate going down one penny. Not one penny from a five thirty-nine, I think that's where we need to be. Um, and again, I, I, that kindergarten decision, uh, to me, that's, that's what we have to do, it is time. It's time for our kids and our community. Sound like I was on soap out there, I apologize. The last slide's questions to them. So, um, so this was, this is what I have, I can certainly make Paul make that adjustment for Monday night. Um, you know, just kinda walk people through the numbers and say, this committee collectively has, has worked on this budget since December. Uh, we've had some hard conversations and we, we prioritize things, uh, and, and here's where we are.
So I just wanna be clear, what are we looking for a motion on, is it not?
To approve the five thirty-nine, six fifty as the school committee final budget request.
Increase?
Increase, increase, sorry. Number, Joe, is, uh, yeah, I have the number. Twenty?
That's our twenty.
Twenty million, seven, two, five, four, fifty.
Make a motion to approve a school committee budget of twenty million.
Seven hundred twenty-five.
Seven hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred fifty dollars.
Sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
I think.
Okay, seven zero zero.
Thank you, you're so, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan, for your work, and Mr. Messina?
Welcome.
We know you really do it, he just looks pretty up here.
Price to look pretty, that's true. Next to you, I'm not sure he can look so.
All right, proposed meeting schedule changes.
So in your drive. Mister Chair, we've talked about, uh, the meeting scheduling, it gets funky in May, in that May fourteenth is the town election. May twenty-first, which should be your regular scheduled meeting, is annual town meeting. One of the things that we talked about was potentially doing, um. A, a meeting greet on five twenty-one, um, as everyone knows, uh, Amy did not pull papers, and I believe somebody did pull papers. For your seat, so there will be a new committee member, um, so we could do an informal half-hour get-together, meet the new candidate. Uh, you meet the new member, and then go into town meeting right from the, the elementary school, uh, just a, a thought.
And when is that?
That would be on May twenty-first, so, and we'd only have one meeting in May as opposed to two. And as we, the other thing that, that's important to understand is, um. The seniors aren't happy about it, but everyone else seems to be happy about it. Our last day of school right now for kids is, is June twelfth. So seniors graduate June seventh. There's only three more days of school for the rest of the student party. That being said, celebration of excellence, celebration of learning, athletic awards night, eighth grade moving on, Tingsborough High School grad. Everything is happening in that two-week timeframe, so to schedule another committee meeting at the end of May may prove difficult pre-prom prom. Just everything that happens, so this proposal allows some flexibility for the schools to use those Tuesday nights, that Tuesday night. As, uh, 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 event night if they need be, um. And, uh, it, it meets all the requirements that we need, we'll be fine.
So, so as to the April twenty-third meeting, that would be our public hearing on the budget. So we, we will have, um, we'll have a public hearing to start. You know, go into recess at the beginning of the meeting to hold a public hearing if, should there anybody, anybody be here, and then, um. School committee later on in that meeting will vote officially on, on the total budget. Thanks.
So we just need an action to.
Make a motion to.
Should, but, if, if I could just real quick, Paul. Should we plan something between. February, I mean, uh, April second and April twenty-third, just in case we have. Something with our tri board meeting come through?
We can see how the tri board goes and.
Possibly schedule something if anything.
Possibly schedule something.
Do a work session.
So there's a work session.
I mean, I don't foresee anything coming out of that, I think they're gonna be extremely happy with the presentation and support it. So, all right, Paul, go right ahead.
Make a motion to adjust the, uh, calendar reflected in this, uh, slide here.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, seven zero zero. Awesome. New business, nine B superintendent evaluation timeline.
So, Mister Chair, in your drive is a proposed, uh, timeline, so what we would hope to do. So you'd all be happy to know, because you've all worked with the instrument before, that Derek has, uh, taken the horrible template. For my evaluation and put it into like a Google form, it's very user-friendly, uh, and allow, um. Tony and the, actually the evaluation subcommittee to collate all the information and create graphs and things like that, and, and look at all that and merge data easily. So the hope would be at our next meeting on the twenty-third, that in executive session or after the meeting, Derek can give you a five-minute tutorial on. How to do the evaluation itself, um, asking that the evaluations are completed by May seventh. Which would then allow the evaluation subcommittee to meet. Come up with a final, uh, evaluation, and then get that to, to me for review, and we can put it on our June, um, agenda. Particularly, it's important this year in that we haven't had changeover in the committee, but with so many new coming on, I think it's right that. Amy do the evaluation and not somebody new who hasn't worked with me, so, um, that's why we propose this timeline, if that seems logical to everyone.
Who's, who's not gonna be on the committee after this meeting? I thought Paul's was up. Nope, okay.
No, it's me and Julie.
You're gonna put out Paul in for one more year.
One more year? All right, let's make sure, okay. I know in years past, we've, um, blown past these dates, I just think it's only, um, fair. To, to Dr. Flanagan that we stick to it, so as subcommittee member of the Irish Free, I'm, I'm committed to, um, writing.
As the chair of that committee, I completely agree with you. We have blown by them, um, I think having the new format is gonna be very helpful. Something we can actually open and, and maybe print. It will be wonderful. So I agree completely.
It's something that makes a little more sense, we talked about it.
Yes. Um, Dr. Flanagan has helped us out quite a bit over the last few months in sending us his monthly updates on his goals. So I hope that everybody has been reading them and will use those, um, in evaluating.
So you'll also have one for the twenty-third, that meeting as well, so there'll be, um, one done for that meeting, so I'll be most recent as well. All right, so that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is gonna take a while.
No, it's not.
Reaffirming policies.
Thanks, Dr. Branko. Tonight, what we do is, um, we looked at a lot of policies, as you can see, however, most of them were reaffirms. Um, so there's only three, um, two of which are gonna be first reads, and one is gonna be put off till next time for the first. For the time after, for the first read, so policies, and these are all in your drive, three point two temporary leave of absence. Um, three point three teacher exchange program, three point sevens certificate of insurance. Four point two education of children at home, four point four home tutoring, illness injury policy. Four point five private tutoring policy, four point seven, I should put on my glasses, um, requirement for physical education. Four point nine library material selection removal procedures, four point ten establishment of school councils. Four point thirteen education slash curriculum pertaining to human sexuality and four point one five dissection. These are all reaffirmed, so there was no changes to any of these policies.
So I'd like to make a motion to reaffirm all these policies. Any discussion?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carrie, seven zero zero.
And then the first reads are gonna be policy three point eight institution self-evaluation. Institutional self-evaluation, excuse me, and three point nine review of instructional material. Those two are in your drive for a first read, so please take a look at those, and we'll have any discussion next time. And the final policy, three, oh.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept policies three point eight and three point nine as a first read.
Second. All those in favor?
And policy three point ten, we'll talk about, come back to that one.
Thank you. Finance, Mister Messina.
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh, very quickly, um, eight bill warrants were presented tonight to the school committee, I have them all back. In your drive are the warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts on those. For signing of payroll, in your drive, you will see the last two payrolls, payroll of March eighteenth and April first. Again, the warrant numbers and amounts are in the drive for your review, and that is it for finance.
Thank you. Any discussion, it's very nice.
We did have capital outset committee meeting, uh, after the last school committee meeting. So I just wanted to update you all on that. The entire committee voted on the proposed items, approving the school items, and we're all in agreement in moving these forward. That included, uh, the district life form clocks and all the numbers from phase one for the Norris Road Complex of, uh, thirty-eight thousand dollars. The THS fire panel, which was $49,563, and a phase one of the roof shingle replacements at the elementary school for $200,000. Our next meeting, I believe, is the 22nd as well, is from the Board of Selectmen. Amy, myself, and Bert will be presenting a two-week voice meeting at that meeting, and hoping for their approval as well. And the next step after that is approving the town meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
And that's all I have. Would you like to add anything?
Um, no, I don't know.
It's getting warmer, hopefully it gets warmer, hopefully all the spring sports, such are going to make us happy to end the season.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
I was just wondering how things are going with the MSBA process.
Yeah, so it's a good question. We have officially been invited in, so.
Right.
So June 3rd, but that doesn't mean we have, I have a task, Dr. Branko and Mr. Paul are starting the educational survey. So they began the preliminary work on starting to answer some of those questions. The hope being that once June 3rd comes and we get invited in, the first, the first process is a signature to the chair of the school committee, so that's nothing. The second thing is, the second deliverable is, what is the establishment of the school building committee? So I need to work with Matt Hans, and I think that's probably going to be maybe May 1st posting of seeking candidates, community members for that. I'm just trying to think of the timeline on that, to try and be nice, we got a meeting mid-June, maybe, before people disappear for the summer.
Yeah.
But, so we're going to be posting out in May, around the month of May, for people to potentially apply to the owner committee, I think that makes some sense. And then the third one is the educational survey. So we have nine, 90 days from June 3rd to get those three things in. So, so we're on it, it's on our radar, but, you know, the next big community step is establishing a committee.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have my thoughts on.
I do.
I think the elementary school did a tremendous job. These two kids that comes in and blows me away even more. I like how they went back and forth, it was pretty cool whoever did that. So just a great job by elementary school.
Yeah, I think we're going to keep, we'll try to keep the kids coming as much as we can, that student voices are is somehow promoting and empowers them, it gives them a say, it gives them confidence and the ability to speak publicly. So they did, they did a tremendous job, very proud of them, those, fun to watch.
I attended, Dr. Flanagan, very nice. A group of us went to our grad night, comedy night. The group that runs that do an outstanding job every year, they really do, comedians are funny. Tons of raffles, they raise a lot of money to support our grad night. So compliments to them for the job they put on, and encourage everybody next year, if you have a Friday night, it's a good time.
Can I jump in? Of course, you just reminded me something. April is scholarship prime month for TST, so if you see students out there, please support TST with whatever you can, we appreciate it. That's it.
And again, to the elementary school kids, they did a great job, seeing. We do have a need for executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public official, officer, employee, staff member, or individual. We will return from executive session only to adjourn our regular session meeting. If this action requires a motion and approval.
Make that motion to go into executive session?
Second.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I'd like to thank Dr. Flanagan for adding all that at the end.